At this time, we'll call the City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Today's Tuesday, February 4th, 2020, and it is 5:35 PM. There has been an establishment of quorum with Councilwoman Ramon, Councilwoman Cuentes, and myself being present. This time, if we can have a moment of reverence and a moment of silence in honor of those of our community who continue fighting for our freedoms overseas and those of our community that they have left behind, if we can have a moment of silence at this time. I would also ask to include the Davis family, former City Councilman Robert Bobby Davis, who passed away recently and who served the city for a number of years. If we can keep him and the Davis family and your thoughts and prayers during this time, please. Thank you. Moving on to Citizens Communications and Recognitions. Seeing that there is one Citizens Communication Form that has been submitted, it is with the Boy Scouts of America, Mr. Augustine Aguilar Jr. And do you wish to address the council, sir?
Yes.
Okay. If you wish to address the council here at the microphone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, hon.
Okay. We're from the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 288. It's a newer troop that me and Mr. Jimenez and Mr. Oscar Aguirre have established. You know, we have another troop, of course, the LDS, that those guys have been around a long time. So, these are our boys. We're missing a couple, so we're about eight, seven or eight strong right now, but hopefully in the near future, PAC 288 Cub Scouts, we're gonna have about two more, three more merge into the Boy Scouts with this crossover, what we call a crossover. So, we're here because these boys have done a, they're working on their merit badge, their Eagle Scout merit badge. There's thirteen of those that they have to accomplish to actually get the Eagle Scout rank. And this is one of them, and it's called Citizen of the Nation. So, they went to camp in December. We did a four-day camp. We froze those four days that we were out there. So, these guys are pretty resilient to anything you throw at them. And they got some of those requirements at that camp. It's like, if you go to those camps, they sleep out there in their tents. We build fires. They learn how to survive out there. Everything is possible. You can make it. You don't need a bed. You don't need a house with air conditioning and heater. You can make it only by knowing the basics, you know, the basics, what to take out there if it's cold, if it's hot. These boys know how to cook for themselves. So, we're establishing a lot of this stuff. To me, it's like a lost art that where technology is taking over. So, this is what my passion is with these guys, is to stay, keep them, keep them at the basic lifestyle. Stay away from, technology, we need it, but also it's fun out there, knowing how to survive out in the wilderness, of course, together, teamwork. And like I said, this is one of the requirements they need, is to sit in at a City Council meeting to earn that merit badge as a citizen of the nation. And of course, at that camp, these boys have earned the Citizen of the World. They already have their Citizen of the World Eagle Merit Badge because that camp provided everything they needed to do for that. So, we're well on our way. Mr. Jimenez, how many Eagle Merit badges have we probably got? Five to six?
Three or four.
Yeah, we're up there. So, we're getting them done quickly, as fast as we can, because of course, time is of the essence. They have to complete these requirements, these Eagle, the Eagle Merit badges and all the other badges, the Fun badges, what we call, before the age of eighteen. So, that's why we're going at it as hard as we can, so that way, we can get them egged out, what we call it, and the Boy Scout egged out as soon as possible. And then after that, we take the Fun courses, and it'll be fun. So, that's what we're about, that's why we have everybody here today. So, everybody, yeah, after this, it's a check mark, they're done with the Citizens of the Nation, and we appreciate you guys having us.
Great. Well, I just want to say to all of you all, as Mayor for our city and council members that are here, and our new mayor that will soon take office, I think that it's absolutely wonderful that you all are here today and you all are doing all that you can to keep on being great citizens, most importantly. The one thing that I've always encouraged in our youth is that they be involved and that they be, most importantly, involved with their government. There's a lot of volunteer opportunities within the city of Eagle Pass that we encourage you to do that, and I wish that on you and of course, on your troop leaders, Mr. Aguilar and of course, Mr. Aguirre, who we've worked with alongside as a city, part of our city family, but I know that there's great opportunities that are coming for you. So, I want to congratulate you all on what you all are doing here today and for what you will continue to do here in our great city of Eagle Pass. So, just with that being said, I'm gonna ask everybody to give you all a round of applause because I think that you all deserve it.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may add, for you Cub Scouts on this journey, just know, being an Eagle Scout is a great accomplishment, and I hope that you continue on this path. I've seen you out there on the meetings every now and then when I'm available. So, I'm proud of you, and just know that if you do get that achievement of being an Eagle Scout, there are state scholarship opportunities for you to go to college also. So, just in case you didn't know, keep it up, and there's opportunities to help you down the road as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not a council member, I'm only the city attorney, but my son is an Eagle Scout. It took him about ten years, but he got there. I mention that because I've been in the situation of hiring other attorneys, and whenever another attorney gives me his resume and it shows that he is an Eagle Scout, we take that very seriously. Employers, whether they're in the legal business or any other business, they really look at whether you become an Eagle Scout or not. What becoming an Eagle Scout shows is that you know how to start something and you know how to finish something, and that is so important in our world today, starting and finishing a project. Congratulations, and keep it up.
Anyone else? So, with that, congratulations to you all. I feel that, you know, it's kinda neat to see the scouts here at the City Council meeting. Hopefully, it won't be that long of a meeting for you all to go through, but that's part of the merit badge process. So, with that comes some torture, but comes great opportunity to learn how your government works. So, I think that just to kind of mirror this event or to kind of leave it in time, if we can take a photo with you all, we'd be honored to do that, because I know that this is a great journey for each and every one of you all. So, I know that our media department is here. If you all can join the council and admin here up in front, we would love to take a photo with you all. Okay, moving on to the agenda and the items that we have set for today, we do have public hearings that we need to move forward with. Item number one, public hearing on the rezone request submitted by Dirksen Engineering for the rezoning of the proposed Castle Rock Subdivision Unit 3, legally defined as a 5.29 acres of land in Maverick County, Texas, out of the Chittam Estate land, out of Survey 1, Abstract 1047, and being parts of a 7.31 acres of land described in conveyance to DW Chisholm Holdings LTD, recorded in Volume 858, Pages 18. A 7.3 acres tract described in conveyance to DWC Creative Homes LLC, recorded in Volume 796, Page 377, and a 6.1511 acres tract described in conveyance to JP Austin Development LLC, recorded in Volume 1062, Page 353. All of the Maverick County official public records, Maverick County, Texas, from R1, First One Family Dwelling District to R2, Second One Family Dwelling District. Closing of public hearing, and there will be no action particular on this item, as the city secretary is deeming particularly on this item, but there will be a presentation on it, correct? So, we will open this public hearing at 5:46 on February 4th, 2020, and I'll turn it over to the planning department. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I do have Ms. Marivee Rodriguez up here with me, support. She's been doing a great job getting me up to speed and getting me knowledgeable in a lot of the details, especially on some of these that have been going on prior to my time moving to planning. As far as this item, it is a request of zoning district classification change from R1 to R2, and the difference mainly there is the size of the lot, from 7,700 square feet to 5,500 square feet. The location is off of Veterans Boulevard, behind the Back to Action Therapy and Maverick. There's a couple of, it's a business suite off of Veterans, as you could see on the map there. There's already a current subdivision there, and this is an additional set of homes that's being built in that property. So, again, it's just a request to rezone of R1 to R2. Castle Rock Unit 3. Question? Another one quick thing just to add, that we did send out notices to the adjacent properties, and I received six in return, all in favor. They did happen to be all by the same owners. They do own several properties in the area, so nothing in opposition.
Questions or comments for the planning department?
How many lots are they talking about?
This one is... Don't have that one off the top of my head. I believe it's somewhere in the 30, rather on the 30 lot. See if I can extract that down.
Yeah, it says 30.
Further questions on the item? If not, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the City Council in regards to public hearing number one? The rezoning of, from an R1, First One Family Dwelling District to R2, Second One Family Dwelling District pertaining to this particular item with DW Chisholm Holdings' request? Being that there is no one in the audience who wishes to address or in attendance that wishes to address the council on this item, we will then close this public hearing on February 4th, 2020, at 5:49 PM. There is no action that is being required on this particular item, as the city secretary has provided the information that no action. We do have an ordinance that will cover this on item number five. Item number two, public hearing on the request submitted by the city of Eagle Pass for the rezoning of property legally defined as 5.51 acres of land, more or less situated in Maverick County, Texas, and fronting 300 feet on the south line of US Highway 277 and located by the resident engineer of the Texas Highway Department for Project Number RW30122, and having a depth of 800 feet, said 5.51 acres of land being out of and a part of the certain 51.25 acre tract of land out of Survey Number 8, Abstract 1111F Fox and J. Byrne, original grantees conveyed to Maverick County by A.D. Idson and by deed dated August 12, 1946, recorded in Volume 38, Page 517, deed records of Maverick County, Texas, 2440 East Main Street, from Industrial District to B3, General Business District, and closing of public hearing. Let the record reflect that this public hearing will now open at 5:50 PM on February 4th of 2020.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is a pretty well-known, well-visible property here in the city of Eagle Pass, at the corner of Veterans and Main Street, just adjacent to the Maverick County Lake. And the request for change in zoning district here is from Industrial B3, General Business, from Industrial to B3, General Business. It is 2440, it's legally known as 2440 East Main Street. This is right in the, it's a prime property, business district of the town, and it just is one of those that makes sense for it to be zoned appropriately. It's currently owned and utilized by Techstart, who in the future may be moving out to a different location off of 480. So, by doing this now, it'll ensure that the next owner utilize it in a more appropriate manner for the area where it is.
Okay. Any questions on the item from the council? Are there any questions from anyone who is in the audience who wishes to address? Item number two in regards to the public hearing from the rezone request from I Industrial District to the B3, General Business District. This has just been submitted for a request at this time. Is there any particular reason? Have they sold, or are they looking into?
Mayor, I meet with Techstart every other week, and one of the things that I had asked is if they're willing to rezone themselves. They approached Austin, and they said that that was fine, as long as they can use their current use. What we didn't want is that when they sell it, they sell it as an industrial, obviously as a nice, hard corner there, and we want to make sure that it's utilized in a more compatible manner, and we saw it as commercial, as a more compatible manner. That's five and a half acres, I believe, of really good real estate, and so, they are in the process of looking at relocating somewhere else because they've outgrown the spot, and also, it's, Techstart understands that it's just very difficult to get in and out of with the large machinery that they have. So, all of that came to kind of fruition for us to bring this to your attention. And so, we're asking for this designation so that we can go ahead and rezone it. Once again, Techstart is perfectly fine with it.
Well, I have to commend you all on thinking proactively and making sure that we could protect especially that type of a corner. We see a lot of movement that's already going on there, specifically across the street. They've done some remodels already to their gas facilities, the gas station facilities. You have the bank, and you know, what is in the other corner for the restaurants? So, great.
Yeah, it's always easier.
Glad that that's being, something that is definitely being considered for the future of Eagle Pass, so.
It's always easier to get the current owners to change.
Yes, and especially this day. What more do you want? All right. Okay. Further questions and comments? Anyone in the audience who wishes to address this item any further? Being that there is none, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing at 5:54 PM on February 4th, 2020. There is no action. This will also be taken in under ordinances. Moving on, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, approval of the minutes for January 7th and January 31st, 2020. Those minutes have been provided for your review. If there are any corrections, additions, deletions that need to be made, if not, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Cuentes, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number four, reports monthly department. Are there any questions for the Bridge Department?
Yes. What was going on yesterday? We had high traffic going across over here.
Seems like there was a holiday on their end.
Is it a Super Bowl Monday holiday? We gotta fight for that over here in the U.S., huh?
Yeah, no, there was a, they had a holiday, I believe it was Friday and Monday, so yesterday everybody was going home visiting the U.S.
We gotta learn, we gotta learn something from that holiday.
Super Bowl Monday.
Super Bowl Monday. Maybe when the Dallas Cowboys are in the Super Bowl, we'll be able to do that.
You'll know it's gonna be.
Then we'll know it's a holiday. And I say that with all love for the Cowboys, all right? Before anybody takes offense to it, that's not what I meant. All right. All moving on to then, the Economic Development Department, financing grants.
Financing grants? Have we been looking at, where's finance, grants? Where's grants? Oh, there you are. Have we been looking at any other grants, like the one for the Antonio Cruz Muñoz Gymnasium, to see if there's anything else out there?
I can answer that one. The, that grant was through TDA, CDBG grant. You may remember that about two years ago, we, the council approved that we would not be applying for this go-around.
Okay.
So, we'll be eligible again in two years. You know, it was an issue with the gentleman's agreement. It's not, it wasn't an issue with anything that we did incorrectly. It was, we decided to sit it out. So, the funding, it'll be about 400, maybe 500,000 dollars next year.
And that's gonna be an interesting, I think that as changes are happening throughout the entire region with the COG, the Council of Governments, the nine counties, you know, we're gonna need to make sure that we can either adhere to the gentleman's agreement or there's going to have to be some major changes as far as how the disbursement is going to take place. For many years, we've been able to maintain that. This past go-around, it was a bit of a challenge, but of course, the city, being the team players that we are, we wanted to make sure that the county also got their fair share in the efforts of what they could apply for, for their respective residents as well. So, I think that we just need to keep that relationship going and move in that direction. Questions for fire? Human resources? ICT? Library? Municipal court? Parks and recreation? Planning and building? Police code enforcement? Public works, city shop? And the tax office? Being that there are no questions for individual departments, we'll go ahead and move on to ordinances. Item number five, consideration and possible approval of an ordinance changing the zoning district classification of Castle Rock Subdivision Unit 3, legally defined as a property legally defined as 5.29 acres of land in Maverick County, Texas, out of the Chittam Estate land, out of Survey Number 1, Abstract 1047, and being parts of a 7.31 acres of land described in conveyance with DW Chisholm Holdings LTD, recorded in Volume 858, Pages 18. At 7.3 acres tract described in conveyance to DWC Creative Homes LLC, recorded in Volume 796, Page 377, and 6.1511 acres tract described in conveyance to JP Austin Development LLC, recorded in Volumes 1062, Page 353. All of the Maverick County official public records, Maverick County, Texas, from R1, First One Family Dwelling District to R2, Second One Family Dwelling District, finding that at the meeting at which this ordinance is passed, is open to the public as required by law, providing for a severability clause and establishing an effective date. This is in regards to the first public hearing. Is there a motion? Motion's been made by Councilwoman Cuentes, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number six, consideration and possible approval of an ordinance changing the zoning district classification of property legally defined as 5.51 acres of land, more or less situated in Maverick County, Texas, and fronting 300 feet on the south line of US Highway 277 as located by the resident engineer of Texas Highway Department for Project Number RW30122, and having a depth of 800 feet, said 5.51 acres of land being out of and a part of that certain 51.25 acre tract of land out of Survey Number 8, Abstract 1111F Fox and J. Byrne, originally grantees conveyed to Maverick County by A.D. Idson, by deed dated August 12, 1946, recorded in Volume 38, Page 517, deed records of Maverick County, Texas, 2440 East Main Street, from an I Industrial District to B3, General Business District, and finding that at the meeting at which this ordinance is passed, is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. This is in regards to public hearing number two. There's a recommendation from the planning department? Motion has been made by Councilwoman Cuentes, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. I believe that the only thing that needs to be noted here, as Mr. Antuna mentioned, was that they would be allowed to continue in that operation until it is sold out, correct? All right. Just for public record, and so that's duly noted by city administration. There is no further discussion on the item? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number seven, second reading of an ordinance of the city of Eagle Pass, Texas, finding that the current rates of the Texas State Natural Gas, Inc., are unreasonable, approving Texas State Natural Gas, Inc.'s revised and uncontested tariffs, setting the effective date of the new tariffs as for bills rendered on or after February 1st, 2020, determining the reasonableness of Texas State Natural Gas, Inc.'s rate case expenses, finding that any relief request by the Texas State Natural Gas, Inc., not specifically granted herein, is denied, finding that at the meeting at which this ordinance is passed, is open to the public as required by law, and providing for notice of this ordinance to this Texas State Natural Gas LTD. This is the second reading. Is there a motion? Motion has been made by Councilwoman Cuentes, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. Is there anything new that needs to be reported on this item? Nothing? Okay. There are no changes in? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number eight, second reading of an ordinance amending Section 5-32, Article 3, Chapter 5, alcoholic beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Eagle Pass to include Horizon Hill Subdivision, Lot 1, 3301, East Main Street, within the areas of which the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises is permitted, finding that at the meeting at which this ordinance is passed, is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. This is the second reading. Is there a motion? Motion has been made by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilwoman Cuentes. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number nine, second reading of an ordinance amending Section 26-204B, Article 8, Chapter 26, traffic of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Eagle Pass by deleting the existing school zones on US Highway 277, south approximately 550 feet west of Foster-Maldonado Boulevard, and approximately 550 feet south of said boulevard, finding that at the meeting at which this ordinance is passed, is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Rosales?
Yes, so, good evening, Council. As you may recall, this item came before you previously, and it's in reference to the construction that's going on along US 277, right in front of CC Win High School. And so, last time that we presented this, there was a couple of questions. There was a request for additional feedback. If you recall, at that point, we had reported that there were three and four students that... If you recall, at that point, we had reported that there were three and four students that were observed crossing, and there was the request for the department to reach out to, um, the school district. And so, since then, we did reach out, um, to the school district. As a matter of fact, we, uh, spoke with Mr. Salinas and with Mr. Araiza, who's more specifically involved with transportation. And so, the topic was discussed with them. They do understand that it is at a specific distance away from the school. However, they feel that because the signalization has already been there in the past, I guess they didn't feel comfortable with it being removed. And so, their recommendation or for consideration from council would be to keep it. Um, I know previously, we had reported that based on what Tech stock has reported, based on the criteria that they use on the engineering judgment, the recommendation from the engineering department was concurrent with Tech stock. But I did wanna report that, um, the school district would like to keep that signalization. And, um, one of the things that was discussed with them as a result of that was because of the project, Tech stock currently already removed, um, power to those, um, potential locations for the sites. And so, I did discuss with the school district that then we would have to discuss avenues for funding this because obviously, if they wanna include those lights back, then there has to be a funding source for that. Now, whether that would come from the school district or the city, that would be the discussion at that point. Um, they did mention the possibility of maybe solar. Um, and, yeah, that, that would be a possibility. Again, there would be also the discussion for where does the funding come from. So, I did wanna report that back. The other thing I wanted to report specifically to, um, Councilman C. Fuentes, who had asked about the different schools that are currently in the ordinance. We did go back and do an inventory of all the schools that are currently in the ordinance, and there was a specific question about, um, the Eagle Pass High School. And there is not something specifically for Eagle Pass High School on the ordinance. There is something a little bit further north on Bib for the junior high. And so, what it prescribes in the ordinance right now is 60 feet north and 60 feet south. So, right now, it has a total of 120 feet of school zone. And so, if we wanted to include that, since we're changing that section of the ordinance right now, we could add the Eagle Pass High School with something similar. Since it's on Bibb Street, it's the same speed limit, so it would be similar verbiage if that were the, the wishes of council.
Yeah. I, I don't think it's the Bibb Street area, 'cause that one is there pretty close. But since now they're utilizing Antonio Garcia,
Exactly.
you know, for parking and they're crossing through there. And the buses are actually dropping students off there, and, and there's no signage there. So, now that that's kind of an entrance, I mean, that's the one that needs to be addressed.
We could, again, if it would be the wishes of council, we could address it by including whether it's Bib, whether it's Arturo Garcia, whether it's both, we could definitely include it. Um, again, it would probably be along the lines of 120 feet because we are looking at the same, uh, uh, speed in, in these roadways. So, the recommendation would be a similar distance, 120 feet total.
So, it would be 120 feet total from the entrance they use?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it would be 60 feet north and 60 feet south.
Of the entrance?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll open it up for questions.
Are there any questions from the council regarding this item?
Well, I just, my concern is, is, um, if the district is, the school district is wanting to keep it, that's, I mean, to us, that's, that's what we're looking after. You know, I don't know how it would, um, I guess financially affect either or. Have they been...
That's the only challenge, uh, uh, Ms. Ramon, is that they, remember, the, the, the Tech stock already removed the signs. They vacated the whole... So, now, um, um, it's a matter of who's gonna take up the cost.
Are the signs gone or they just turned up?
For the school for that at all?
So, the signs are gone?
Oh, they are.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your question, 'cause they're under construction. So, if you remember, they did do a little bit of widening and they're doing the sidewalks. So, a lot of that infrastructure is getting pulled out. And so, during that, they pulled it out with the idea that they weren't gonna put it back there.
And I understood that they just cut the power.
Do we have a cost for solar?
That, that was gonna be the next thing. We don't have it right now, but I can definitely report back at the next...
I just think that, you know, um, you can't put a price on a child or a student, you know, and their safety. And that's why I had a very big issue with, you know, even the consideration of their removal from the get-go of this and when it was first presented. Uh, and that's why I wanted to have the district's, um, comments because I think that at this point, you know, we've done certain things on other sides or other parts of the town uh, to make sure that we can address student safety. Um, and despite the entrance or the, is it 1,000 feet? What is it from the, that's required by state, you know, uh, law to require that on, on a state highway? I think that you're still seeing, I think the report was at least what was crossing that highway by foot was either five that would take an actual, you know, uh, crossing at the crosswalk there or whatever.
Yes.
Uh, that, but we need to, to kinda just take into consideration that, you know, the student's safety should be the priority regardless of how many walk there or how many...
One is too many.
Yeah. And, you know, I think that we've seen some major issues and some major or, or even, you know, some accidents that have really harmed, uh, students over in front of the Eagle Pass High School area, you know? And that's, that's on, that's not a, that's not a highway. That's Bibb Avenue.
Thirty miles an hour.
That's a lower rate, you know? I think, uh, that area in particular is at 45 miles more or less, depending on the segment of the stretch.
I think that's what the school zone read, 45. It would drop from 55 to 45. Not a big drop-off really, you know, but it would...
And so, on Foster Maldonado, ju- just so that you can compare, because the speed is so much higher, the distance is actually 550 feet west and 550 feet east.
Of, on 277 or on Foster Maldonado?
No, no, on 277.
On 277.
From Foster Maldonado, 550 one way and 550 the other. And so, the consideration there is the speed.
Yeah.
As opposed to 120 on Bibb. But what we can do, I believe this is the second reading?
Yeah.
It's the second reading.
So...
You can continue with the third.
Yeah.
But the only thing is...
I'll, I'll report back at the next one with the cost for solar and obviously, the additions that we need to do. Now, do you want us to include both Bibb and Arturo Garcia or just Arturo Garcia for the high school?
Well, I think, like I said, Bibb already has the signs.
It, it may have the signs, but in the ordinance, it does not have it.
Oh!
Specified, anything for the high school.
Wow. So, yeah, you better add it so to make, yeah.
So, we'll go ahead and make that change.
Yeah. I mean, you got the signs out there, so it's not in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's not in the ordinance, but we'll go ahead and, and modify it.
And, uh, Ms. Antuna, I guess we can make sure that, uh, for next time, and I know it's, you know, it's gonna take some competition with the district, but so we can at least have an idea, you know, if they're willing to, to, to help, you know?
I, I'm definitely gonna ask them that, most definitely, um, so, and we'll, we'll bring that to you, to you guys as well. As you well know, there is a stoplight there and there is a crosswalk signal there, uh, there as well. And those kids that are crossing over, uh, they park, as you well know, they park at the, uh, Fort Duncan Medical Center because they can't park at the high school because they don't have insurance.
Exactly.
But...
And they're gonna continue to do that unfortunately.
And I get that. I just wanted you... So, we'll bring that information to you.
The district's still getting a dollar from the license plates, uh, on, for, for signage and the street crosswalks? Isn't that what they're paying us so we can redo the streets crosswalks? That's not, that's not in existence anymore, Petrol? Or a judge? Is there anything on, on the fees that you charge that would pertain to that type of, um, of safety on, on the traffic corridors at school?
There is a fine, part of the fines that is for child safety that we've used in the past for repainting the crosswalks at, at school districts. It's a very small amount. It's, um, I don't remember the amount, but it's, it's relatively small. It's just a fraction of the, of the fine.
So, we would have to look at what it would cost to put in the signage and solar, whatever it's gonna be. But I thought there was funding mechanisms through this, when you renew your license, your license plates? They don't get a dollar there that, that they're, that's what they use to help us pay for the crosswalks? No?
No.
No more?
No, the state has certain, certain requirements that are, that are paid out in certain percentages that come out from, from that, but they're specifically for...
School districts.
For school safety?
For, I'm not, no.
We'll get that information for you, Councilwoman.
All right. So, then I think with that, move that on, on to the third reading and, and hopefully it'll be finalized with the next agenda that is set. Okay? Uh, thank you, Ms. Rosales.
So move.
A motion's been made by Councilman C. Fuentes.
Second.
The second has been made by Councilwoman Ramon with a discussion to report back to council at the next meeting. All those in favor? Unanimous. Moving on to item number 10. Consideration and possible approval of a resolution appointing members to the Eagle Pass Public Library Board. Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, Mayor and Council. All these, uh, terms have expired. They expired since July of last year, 2019. Um, I did, we have reached out to the members and some do wish to, the majority do wish to continue. It's only for place four, but, um, Councilmember Place Four, he had advised me. Do you still wish to proceed with Mr. Pablo Cantú?
Was he still interested?
Well, when we asked, back when we asked him, he was interested.
He was? Or no?
He's the one who you told us so...
Yes. That, that was a while back ago.
Yeah, it was a while back. That's why we're not sure if you wish to, to proceed with him.
Oh, we hadn't put him in there?
No, no. We had, we hadn't continued because that, no one else, I think Ms., uh, Ramo, Councilwoman Ramon is the only one and the mayor, only you three that are present are the ones who had actually given me...
Oh. So, who's missing?
Well, uh...
Davis and Yarpon?
Yes.
They have not put anybody in place?
No. But they're not here, so I don't know. Do we table it again?
Is that a, is that a quorum enough to get the board going for now?
Well, the board still has the holdover set.
Yeah, the board continues until, until, yes.
Yes, but mine resigned, didn't she?
Yes.
So, I would like to always put him in there.
Have they...
No, they haven't had a meeting.
No? Okay. I mean, you can always submit whatever it is that we have and then whoever's pending at a following meeting, the way that we have this, just move on. So, do you have the names?
Yes, I have, um, the only one who cannot continue is Ms. Charles, but, um, Councilman Place Two is not here. But for place three, we, you had Ms. Irma Gonzalez, and she wishes to continue.
Okay.
For, um, for place four, you have Pablo Cantú, and for place five, you have Ms. Deoni Olivares Westin.
Okay.
And they do wish to continue, so do you, I mean...
Move forward with them?
Move forward with these?
So, move to move forward with them.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman C. Fuentes, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number 11. Consideration...
Just for the, which ones were the ones we just appointed? Five, four, and...
Three, four, and five.
Three, four, and five? Okay.
Item number 11. Consideration and possible approval of a resolution appointing a member to the animal grievance board of the City of Eagle Pass. Ms. Rodriguez?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council. This one is for Councilperson Place Two. As, as you all know, um, it was with the passing of Dr. Margot Martinez, but, um, Councilperson, um...
No name.
Mr. Yarpon doesn't hear, he has not given us anything.
Table that item.
Yeah.
Motion to table?
Yes, ma'am.
So, move has been made by, uh, Councilman C. Fuentes, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number 12. Consideration and possible action on the final plat of the Morales Kramer subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this, this item is a request, final plat approval submitted by TEC Services for, uh, a lot that is, um, very nearby, actually in the vicinity, in the Fort Duncan vicinity, um, south of, um, southwest of City Hall. And it is one industrial lot being requested to be subdivided into two. It is a warehouse, uh, warehouses are built on them and they would be subdividing in order to be able to sell or, or have more flexibility with those properties. Um, the planning and zoning commission did recommend approval, uh, of the final, final plat approval, including, uh, variance to the plat property size less than five acres and, uh, variance to proceed to final plat directly without first having obtained preliminary plat approval at the January 9th meeting. So, PNZ, um, is in support of the item. Is there any questions regarding, regarding this item? Just a few pictures here of the property and the warehouses.
Just simply because it is within the historical, uh, portion of the, uh, Fort Duncan area and the sensitivity of that, what are we looking at as far as from going from preliminary to final? Uh, and the steps, of course, that we are kind of passing, you know, just to kind of keep this moving. I just wanna make sure that the historical integrity, which I know it's kind of difficult, uh, with the warehousing that has already been, uh, constructed in that area. I know that particularly, there has been some issues, uh, regarding that specific, uh, connection, whether it's water lines. I think that those have already been cleared. Um, but is there anything else that needs to be, you know, reported as far as just the protection of how that's not gonna affect in any way, shape, or form the historicness of the area?
Unless they apply for any type of building permit, that, then we would have to present that over to, um, Main Street Coordinator.
Okay.
And that, would that also be a call from the historical commission to approve that or...
Hmm, I'm not aware.
I mean, is that considered historical?
None of this is registered with the state.
It's not registered?
Fort Duncan. That's what I'm saying. The protection of that area. I mean, being, 'cause this is literally right there. That's why I just wanna make sure that if we have, if we have surpassed the preliminary to go straight to the final, I just wanna make sure that we take in all of those steps into, into play to make any protection of what Fort Duncan would have if there's any disruption. I mean, we're talking that literally there's about, from that one particular building, maybe not even 800 feet, you're gonna see the, one of the first, the historical buildings that's there. So, I just wanna make sure that disruption of that is not an issue. And I just wanted to put that on the record so that we can make sure that we are protecting the interests of the fort and the history that comes with that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very good point, and I, I think maybe the reason, um, is that the existing, the buildings are existing.
Correct.
They're not planning to change them. I think that's why it was not really taken into consideration, but that is a really good point because it is so close.
Okay.
But the...
Are the buildings considered to be on Fort Duncan grounds property? On Fort Duncan grounds?
Adjacent.
They're adjacent, but are they part of the Fort Duncan?
Not to my knowledge.
To my knowledge, no. I think when, when it was, um, replatted, um, and, and kinda thinking back to some other research I was doing in the golf course area, at one point, it was all one, um, piece of land that the government, um, issued, deeded over to the city. But at its current stage, it is, it's no longer, although it's pretty much surrounded all around it, it's not actually Fort Duncan Park or land anymore.
And like I said, the only concern there was just making sure that we were protecting that something wasn't gonna either encroach in any way or that there was gonna be some type of a disruption of an operation that would affect those buildings by movement or anything like that. That's my only concern. But I'm gonna leave that to the planning department to make sure that, you know, just leaving it on the record that we can make sure that we need to be vigilant of those types of issues that could arise if those historical buildings do, you know, receive any type of additional damage.
Definitely, that's a good point.
Okay.
So move.
Motion has been made by Councilman C. Fuentes.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Uh, moving on to item number 13. Consideration and possible action on the final plat of Villaromel Estates, subdivision unit number two.
Sir, we're good. We'd like to take that into executive session.
Very well, then if we can go ahead and table this item for the end and we'll take all the other items prior. Is there any other item? Well, we'll go ahead and continue that. Is there a motion to table? The item into executive session? Motion's been made by Councilman C. Fuentes.
Just that one item, 13?
Unless there's any other items that administration's requesting for executive session?
The only one, ma'am.
Being, there's a second for the discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number 14, consideration and possible approval on the final plat of Ol Pioneer subdivision. Mr. Madara.
Yes, Mayor, this is a request from Amistad Consulting Services to subdivide a tract of land, a little over seven acres into five.
How many acres, I'm sorry?
Seven.
Seven.
Just over seven acres into five residential lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval for this request, including a subdivision sidewalk waiver and a concrete curb and gutter waiver, being that in that area, there are no other sidewalks, so if they were built, it would be a sidewalk that's connected to nothing and gutters also on its own, which would defeat the purpose of those. The old Pioneer Road is off of El Indio Highway and as you can see here, there is a 2.85 acre piece of land that is not part of this. I'm not sure if you can see the shading there. It's a larger estate there, they got a small pond, maybe if you've been in that area, you'd recognize it. So this area of the seven acres that's being requested for the subdividing kind of makes a U and surrounds that, that area. Any questions with the request for this?
Are there any questions?
Now, I know we're granting the variance on the sidewalks, but that's a county.
It isn't a county.
They compare with.
I mean, so even though we grant it, they can?
Well, they compare with our.
They did concur? Okay. Even better.
Any further questions?
So move.
Motion has been made by Councilman C. Fuentes, second by Councilwoman Ramon, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number 15, considerate, thank you all, thank you, Ms. Madara. Moving on to item number 15, consideration and possible awarding slash rejection of requests for proposals for the RFP 202003-003 for Golf Course Management Services. Torres.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. We did receive two responses on December 20th at 2:00 PM. The responses were from Landscape Golf Management and Touchstone Golf. I'm sorry, you should have this printed out in front of you. The evaluation panel was comprised of our city manager, George Antuna, our Parks and Recreation Director, George Sanchez, Marketing Tourism Manager, Ayda Castaño, and our Assistant Finance Director and now Planning Director, Placido Madera. The interviews were held with these firms on January 30th, 2020 and the recommendation from the panel is to select Touchstone Golf and the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the agreement. On the second page is the tabulation of the scoring. So you see the scoring for Touchstone Golf at 1,075 and Landscape Golf Management at 1,015. If I can make a quick comment, you know, both firms are very, very qualified to do the work. I believe that the committee ultimately decided with Touchstone because they have related experience similar to our goal. It just was more compatible with, with the city.
Are there any questions?
I do have a question, just, just like everything else, you know, we just want to always make sure that, that our employees, they're currently there, are going to be taken care of, okay? Is there, what, what is, what, where are we with that?
So this, the, this proposal for management services is a company coming in to basically tell us what we need to do, point us in the right direction. The fee that we would assess to them is to manage, but they would still be responsible for running the whole operation. So the employees would be employees of Touchstone. For the current employees, they'd really have an option to join the Touchstone team or possibly fill vacancies that exist. You know, when we talked, we talked, when we took up the, the issue with park maintenance, that was the same thing that we encountered. It was, you know, they could become employees of the Green Company or fill existing vacancies.
How many employees do we have?
Four.
Four.
Yes.
Are they all, not all of them are full-time, though?
Those four are full.
Are full-time?
Yes.
And by the way, I wanted to introduce Mr. Doug Harkin that's here. He is the Executive Vice President of, of Touchstone Golf Courses.
So I guess that question would be for him?
I'm sure you can answer it.
Mr. Harkin, if you care to approach. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see the name here, but again, what was?
Mr. Harkin.
Parker.
Mr. Parker, okay, hi. Okay, I guess that question should be addressed to you. There is four employees of the city there and obviously they will be given a choice, you know. Can you tell us anything about if they're, they choose to remain with Touchstone? Would that be an option?
Yes. Typical for us is we open employment to all existing employees, provided the city doesn't have any reason for them not to join us, yes.
Is there anything that you wish to kind of just share with us briefly on, on the services, of course, that you all provide? I know that we've given, we've been given a, a pretty good rundown of, of everything within your package and the, the work that you all do, but just for, our Eagle Scouts.
Right. Thank you, Mayor, and, thank you, Mayor and Council. We're, we're very much looking forward to this assignment. Our company's 15 years old. We manage 40 courses across 11 states, nine of which are here in Texas. Half of our portfolio approximately are municipal and government-owned properties. We feel that's a particularly strong niche for us and part of the reason for that is making the golf course itself more a part of the community as opposed to just a place for golfers to go play golf. And so that's been our, our hallmark from the very beginning of our company. We also have a little bit of a unique aspect in that we currently manage facilities, three facilities along the Texas-Mexico border. So this will be our fourth. So a little bit of, also a little bit of a niche for us. I think we understand the communities and understand the opportunities in, in those markets. We're a full-service company. We will communicate to the city as much as the city wants communication or as little as the city wants communication. All of our municipal clients are different in that regard. Some, it's a weekly meeting with the city manager or assistant city manager or Parks and Rec Department. Sometimes it's just an annual presentation like in the City of Fredericksburg to city council on progress and activities that are going on at the golf course. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of an introduction on us. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Well, I just want to thank you all for stepping up to the plate on this particular project. This has been something that I think for many years we have been looking to do for the, with, with what would be in the best interest of the course. We have a shining opportunity to do as much as we possibly can because I think we're a very unique course. There's, I don't think another course that's literally right on the Rio Grande, unless maybe that might be something that you all have in others. But particular for this region, there's a beautiful course in Piedras Negras that's 18 holes and we still have a number of residents from over there that still come play here. And I think it's just the, the, the ability for them to continue, you know, playing where they're, where they're used to, but also playing in an area that I think gives a real good sense of peace, which I think golf is supposed to do. I don't know, I'm not a golfer. But nonetheless, I can tell you that, you know, a lot of people truly have enjoyed the golf course for many years and if we can make it greater, I'm sure that your company would be the one to, to help the City of Eagle Pass continue to reach that goal. So I just want to thank you for, for stepping up and for looking to work with city administration, particularly in the council, on the goals that are to come with that in the future.
Well, thank, thank you for the opportunity.
And I will add, in talking to some of the golfers, they're looking forward to a change in how things are done there. We've had issues in keeping the greens green all the time.
Right.
You know, fairways fair. I was just saying that one. So, and, and there's discussion how high it should be, how short it should be. So I mean, those are the type of things that I think we've, we've been looking for and I know as long as the mayor and I have been here, this is probably the third time we've tried to do this. So we're hoping that this time we're able to reach a consensus and, and hopefully improve that golf course to make it attractive, not just to the current golfers, but to new, yeah, new golfers. Women, children, you know, everybody, because that's what a thriving golf course should be like. So I do like it, but I, I am concerned that we don't know the proposals on the fee structure. So that's something that, that I would like to see as, as you start, you know, negotiating and moving forward on it.
Right, it's our custom not to change any rates at the golf course until the city's had a chance to hear our evaluation of that, so.
So you'll be evaluating it? So if we were to go into contract with you all, you all will still evaluate it to see what else needs to be done?
Right, as I said, we typically don't change rate structures at a municipal facility on the first day of operation, unless our client wants us to, in which case we could analyze it before we started. But our typical client in the municipal space is going to want us to take three, six, or nine months to evaluate that. We might add a rate, like a new program, but a lot of those decisions are based on what the city's approval requirements are. And our, of the 19 public entity golf courses we manage, there's probably six or seven different approval processes that we have. For example, the City of Fredericksburg, it's an ordinance and it goes to city council and they vote on the rates once a year. In some places, it's delegated to the city manager, it's delegated to the Parks and Recreation Department. We, we'll comply with whatever your requirements are to change rates.
And here specifically, it's also by ordinance, the way we have that set up. So those would have to be issues that would come before council specifically.
Perfect, yeah.
And I'm not going to use the word hopefully, I'm going to use the word expectation, you know. I think we've, we've waited long enough for this. I think the golfers have waited long enough for this. I know that conversations took place between them, so I think the expectations are going to be high, you know, very high. And I trust that, you know, all due diligence was done and so I am trusting that, I guess, we selected or are going to select the best because the expectations are high. We're not, we're, we're, I guess, one of the 20 now that you will have, but we are going to expect a lot.
Good. We like a good high bar, so.
Yes, and, and the bar is going to be pretty high.
We just want you to make a hole in one. That's it.
I've never done that, played my whole life. My son has.
It's that simple.
You know, it's just, you know, we're, what, we, we keep saying we're a small community, we're not as small anymore, you know. And, and I know that some of the golfers that are there, those are, those are, you know, gentlemen and a few ladies that haven't been there for years and years and years. And as it is, we're changing, you know, the way they have been conducting business for many, many years. I'm sure some of them are in favor, I'm sure some of them are not. And so they're going to be expecting and they're going to be, you know, expecting a lot from us up here. And so I'm sure they're going to hold us to, if you all made this change, it better be a great change, not just a good change. So, you know, just, just saying.
We, we did do our due diligence. Madam Councilwoman, we did visit their sites. Oh, you know, Melva Deras went with us, Placido went with us, Ayda went with us, you know, I went and we visited their, their, their location. And they took over a challenging government entity golf course and they turned it around. And so that's what we're looking, looking to see here as well. And also their outreach program to the community, remember, it is not a golfer's golf course, it's the community's golfers. And so this is going to, they're definitely have an outreach program set up to be able to encourage additional golfers to, to be able to play that, that haven't in the past.
And I like that as part of the proposal you all have, that those are some of the things that are really attractive. Now, we also have the miniature golf course there. Will the negotiations include using the miniature golf course or that's going to be separate?
No, part of the RFP included that they are going to be operating that as well and maintaining it.
It, it's a great asset to have at a facility like that. I mean, we're, that probably got us interested more than anything is just being able to offer different levels of golf enjoyment and right there, side by side with the golf course.
Well, I'm sure you all are going to do, you know, excellent things, working towards that. You know, I encourage you more than anything to take the opinion of the, of the golfers and their needs because that's something that to me is very important as well and I think for the council. While the users are there, we want to bring more to that area. So that's, that's what we've had for quite some time and we know that it'll, it'll be a great success, so. I just thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I'm glad you took some of our golf experts from the City of Eagle Pass. Who plays?
Are they experts?
Placido, no, you don't play.
He is, all the, they, they all are.
I got golf clubs.
Three lessons.
That's a start. Ayda? Not even putt-putt.
I was the first to say expert. They were green.
You play, right?
All right, so with that, there is a motion and a second, is that correct? No, there's not. Or is there a motion? Motion's been made by Councilman C. Fuentes, second by Councilwoman Ramon, discussion. Being that there is none, and this is to obviously authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations and to execute an agreement. So with that being said, for, there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number 16, consideration and possible awarding slash rejection of requests for proposals, RFP number 2020004 for Financial Advisors Services. Torres.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Again, we received two responses for this RFP. The responses were received on December 6th at 3:10 PM. The two response, well, the first response was from Hilltop Securities and the second was from PFM Financial Advisors LLC. The evaluation panel was comprised of the city manager, Mr. George Antuna, the assistant city manager, Mr. Ivan Murua, myself, our assistant finance director and planning director, Placido Madera, and our city secretary, Ms. Imelda Rodriguez. Interviews were held on January 30th with both firms. And once again, I do have to comment that, you know, both firms are extremely qualified, you know, this is what they do. And it showed in, in the interviews. But overall, the recommendation was to select PFM Financial Advisors and the recommendation is to authorize city manager to negotiate and execute the agreement. The second page does contain the scoring, so as you can see, based on the qualifications, it was, it was pretty close. 920 points for PFM and 880 points for Hilltop Securities.
How many, how, how many was that? I'm sorry?
920 points for PFM and 880 points for Hilltop Securities.
I'm going to have to ask you to say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
920?
924?
No, 920 for PFM and 880 for Hilltop Securities.
880 for Hilltop, yes.
Now, I have heard good things about both companies, but, but I think this is an important component to our, to the city. And being that there will be new members coming into council, I think that it's prudent for them to be aware of the financial advisors and since it's, it's only a few days away, to me, it would be in best interest to table this item to allow the new members to consider this.
You know what, I'm going to have to unfortunately disagree with Mr. C. Fuentes there. I believe that if we already went through the solicitation process, you said we went through the interviews, we went to the, what is it? I wrote down some, I wrote the same thing here, but I know you mentioned three things, that we went through the solicitation process, the interviews and something else, okay? The scoring, obviously there's a difference in the points. Yes, we are getting a new council and I'm aware of that, you know, I'm, I'm aware of the fact that we're getting a new council. However, I think we are aware also that it's just not for us to get, you know, situated, for us to get comfortable with what we're doing. And I think we already went through all that and there was, obviously you all are recommending, you know, and there's, I think there's no reason why we should hold it. I think we should move forward because that would only be holding us back and that's not what we want. I mean, you, you know, we want a new city council, we do have a new city manager, but we want is what, just to move forward with everything, not, there's no reason why we hold, be holding back. If you all already did, again, are your due diligence and you took care of everything that needed to be taken care of. You know, in my opinion, Mayor, I think that is something that we should move forward, there's no reason why we should hold back. That's just my humble opinion, I think. I mean, because this is.
Are there specifics?
Going through the process again, you know, and there's no reason for that.
You know, I can definitely, you know, agree on, on both stances. I think that, you know, we, we definitely have to make sure that we are doing all that we can to, to keep the city moving forward. I do want to, I did have, of course, some questions regarding particularly the company in, in, that is coming up for, for selection. So I, I would kind of ask, just by, there was, there'd be some additional ones, but specifically on, on the, on whatever's to come with that. So I'd like to kind of have this in executive session if, if we don't mind. And then kind of move from there, so I may have some legal questions regarding that, if that's fine with you. We already have another item, we can definitely move that. I did have some also, some questions regarding the public safety headquarters in regards to what is coming on those change orders and specifically the lead, the process that, that we're looking at. So I would ask the council. So I would ask the council at this point to go ahead and move items sixteen and seventeen into executive session along with item number thirteen, so that we can finalize any discussions that we have on those items and move forward from there.
So move the table.
Second items, ma'am.
Okay, are to move into executive, that's it, that's all we have, yeah. So items number sixteen, seventeen, and thirteen, to go ahead and move these items into executive session. That would be the motions, Council?
Yes, ma'am.
Council, that would be, motion's been made, there's been a second for the discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous. Let the record reflect that the council will move into executive session at six forty-four P M, taking in items number thirteen, sixteen, and seventeen into executive session for, under section five five?
One.
One point zero seven four.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. It's not on there, but hey, we know it's already, all right? So this will go into under questions for legal. And all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous. Item number sixteen. In regards to this item, I believe that there is a recommendation to table this item and proceed for the next meeting when the new council shall take office. Does that affect? Motion has been made by Councilman Cifuentes.
Can I have a stay? The motion doesn't pass.
Yeah, the motion's not.
Motion didn't pass?
No, it does not pass.
Okay. Motion does not pass then, in regards to this item. Legal? There just no action taken, and how does exactly do we proceed?
Correct, it would be no action taken.
Okay.
Same as table.
Okay, then with that, there is no action pertaining to item number sixteen. Item number seventeen, there is a recommendation from the planning, from the finance department to table this item. However, there is a savings that's being reported, we just need to get the final numbers.
Correct, Mayor, the proposed change order is a reduction to remove the fire suppression system, some aspects of the fire suppression system at the building that are not required by code, and so it results in the savings, but we're finalizing the numbers and we'll bring it back at the next council meeting.
Okay. Motion's been made by Councilman Cifuentes, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous. Motion to adjourn. Motion's been made by Councilman Cifuentes, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, unanimous. Thank you all very much. The next meeting is set for the eleventh, correct?
Correct.
The eleventh.
What time, five or five o'clock?